Time for certain. And where will it end? We don't know. How will it end? I'm not sure. But my two biggest favorite words, but God. I was having a wonderful discussion with Majority Leader a few minutes ago. Ten years ago, at this time, we were together on the west side of Buffalo on Jersey Street. And that was a day that a friend of all of ours, Delia Roman-Knox, who'd been in a wheelchair for more than 20 years, was healed. And we got to watch her walk up those steps into Mom and Dad's arms on the west side of Buffalo. It was what many of us would call a pretty remarkable miracle, and it played out in your district. It was exciting and amazing. And it reminds me that the reason we press into faith at difficult seasons is because, although I don't know what's to come, I know someone who does know what's to come. And he's able to do more than I understand, expect, know, or can get my hand around, but he just waits for us to tag him in. A scripture that I want to give you is from Lamentations, Chapter 3. It says, "My soul is downcast within me, yet this I call to mind, and therefore I have hope. Because of the Lord's great love, we're not consumed; for his compassion never fails. They're new every morning." Great is your faithfulness. Would you bow with me in prayer? Father, thank you for your word. Thank you that even today, Councilmember Rivera, the Majority Leader, and Deb and I were able to remember and celebrate that memory of that day 10 years ago. Lord, there's all kinds of need that these council members have, personally, professionally, our city. There's a desperation. And Lord, you know that in our neighborhoods, in our districts, up and down streets, schools and businesses, so much uncertainty, so much hurt and pain, and then the grief of those who've buried loved ones during this outbreak. But Father, in the midst of all that, your faithfulness is great. We celebrate it together today. And as that day 10 years ago, we reminded the God that you are, remind each of us today as decisions, important, critical, crucial decisions are to be made, that you're simply willing to help us walk through times we've never seen before. Give us and grant us supernatural wisdom through you. We ask, in your son's name. Amen.
Councilmembers, memorials? Councilmember Galunde.
Thank you, Mr. President. Buffalo took it on the chin this past week with the passing away of Cliff Robinson. Riverside High School graduate, I went to school with Cliff. We knew each other. I remember driving him home. I can't remember if he lived on Shulley or Schauf Street, but I remember on numerous occasions, driving him home after basketball practice. He was, I believe, a freshman or sophomore of the year. I was a senior. And I got to know him a little bit and followed his career. And we were on the Riverside High School alumni page and things like that. Now, I haven't seen him for many, many years, but I think it was right before I got elected. It was in the late 90s or just after I got elected, the last time I briefly ran into him with some Riverside High School friends. But 53 years old, very young, and very sad, very tragic. But what a wonderful life, and you know, I think such an unsung hero in the NBA. I mean, I was looking at his statistics, and I forgot how good he was until I was looking at the statistics and the all-time statistics, and I was like, oh my gosh. You know, but he was just so unassuming in so many ways. And as I said to a couple of friends of mine from Riverside, and I think this is the greatest epitaph that someone can have, he was a good guy, and he's going to be very sorely missed.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to echo that I played with Cliff. I didn't play professionally with him. He was a nice guy, but nasty on the basketball court. But he was somebody that's going to be missed. He came from the east side and rose and made it to the NBA, and we were very, very, and many of us were very, very proud because he was probably one of the first ones of our generation that we knew. So my prayers go out to his family. Also chat with the actor, and I say that only because in this time of where we are today in our society, he meant something to young men about a superhero. And to hear his speech from Howard University was very inspiring because he encouraged us to speak out, to stand up. So my heart and prayers go out to his family. 43-year-old, passive colon cancer, that just sends a message to us as men to be responsible and make sure that we get that test, as well as the legendary coach, John Thompson. And again, this is somebody who I respected because I respected what he stood for for our children. He was a strong advocate for inner-city children, and we could not have had a stronger advocate for inner-city children in caring about not only them being able to have a career in basketball, but for them to be able to have an education. He was a strong advocate. So we mourn the loss of those three individuals and what they meant to our country. Thank you.
Yep. We mourn the passing of Demetrius Robinson, who was also known as DJ Shea. He got several people from Buffalo signed with Jay-Z, and he had just moved to Atlanta. And unfortunately, he passed at an earlier age than expected, but he helped so many young people in the music industry and so many people from across the country who contacted us to give condolences. And he was buried at the True Bible Church last week in probably one of the most unique caskets that I've ever seen, a full-glass casket. I've never seen that in my 55 years of living, but the public, which really, you could see the hurt because he helped so many people. We pause in these chambers for those names that have been said and for anyone who gave their life for the freedom of our country or any other country since our last meeting. We pause in these chambers for a moment of silence. Councilmembers, we're going to be pausing the meeting until we get an update. Do we have some?
Yes.
So I was just informed that the beginning of our meeting, so that the public who is watching will know, there were some technical issues and the first, the prayer scripture and the memorials were not, the audio was not playing to the audience, but I had all intentions of pausing the meeting if there was no audio so that the public can still hear what we are saying in our meeting. So I am informed that the sound is back, so we can start the meeting, but so that the public knows there was no business conducted when the audio was off. An emotion by Mr. Rivera, second by Mr. Scanlon. The minutes of the stated meeting held on July 21st, 2020 are approved. Councilmembers, the late files are before you. Are there any objections to any of the late files that are before you? Hearing no objections, we will hear the entire agenda as it is before us. And just again, a note to the public, our council meetings will continue to be live to the public over the internet on the platforms that we were on. And as the science changes, at this point, we do not have the public in the chambers, and usually at a council meeting, the public does not speak in the chambers during a council meeting. So that we are not limiting the public when it comes to committee meetings. Those meetings will be virtual and online because we didn't want, if they wanted to be a speaker or needed to be a speaker on something, that we could not bring them in the chambers. So that is what we're doing to keep the transparency and to keep the public informed and to do what our duty is, is to hold our meetings in public. So thank you, and welcome back, councilmembers. And I should say this, that this is by the science. If something were to happen where there was some type of outbreak in City Hall or numbers go up, this is fluid. So this doesn't mean this will always be, something could occur that we would have to give public notice of the all-virtual meeting. And let's pray that it doesn't. All right, from the top.
Item number one, declaration of state of emergency.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Galunde.
Item number two, amend designated developer agreement for 321 Olympic.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number three, Buffalo Halal Suites and Roadie House Broadway Market lease.
Motion to approve items three through six.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number seven, lease agreement between City of Buffalo and Hammond Park Community and Taxpayers Association.
Am I clear if we?
Councilmember?
We are, we are going to receive and file this because we need to submit a version of this that has already been executed by Corporation Council, City of Buffalo, and Hammond Park Taxpayers Community Association. So we will receive and file this. They will file the amend, they will file the executed version today for next council session.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure clear that we don't have to approve each item individually like we did in the past, or no?
We, we don't because we're in chambers.
Correct. We'll break down.
Yes, sir. Thank you for asking that, for clarification. So the motion by the Majority Leader is to receive and file. Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item eight, local landmark, 348 Austin.
This item is going to legislation. Hearing date is going to be September the 8th.
Second by Councilmember Galunde.
Just to clarify, we, the hearing will not be on September 8th. We'll set the hearing date on September 8th.
Oh, you'll set the hearing date.
Item number nine, permission to designate developer, NCC Seventh-day Adventist.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number 10, permission to grant utility easement to National Grid Niagara Mohawk.
Motion to approve items 10 and 11.
Second by Councilmember Farrah Leto.
Item 12, report of sale, 604 Norfolk.
Motion to send to legislation.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item 13, report of sale, 6369 Zunner.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item 14, appoint real estate maintenance supervisor.
Motion to send to civil service.
Second by President Protem Scanlon.
Item 15, five-year capital debt plan, 2021 to 2025.
Motion to send to finance, items 15 through 19.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt, who has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to speak just a moment on item number 15 and the plan of increasing the amount of capital debt we're going to take on. And I know it's going to committee, and I'll speak more about it then, but I would hope that we have the control board to be involved in this conversation because this is the type of stuff that's gotten us to where we are. I, I just can't imagine that we're going to increase the amount of capital debt from 20-something million to 32 million next year when we don't know what next year holds. We don't know what tomorrow holds. So why are we looking at increasing the amount of debt or a purchase of debt capital expenditure when we are confused about what's going on right now? We don't know if we're going to get this stimulus money. We don't know if Mr. Biden is going to win. That may help us. We don't know. So for us to put anything out there that's not conservative and fiscally responsible is irresponsible. So I just want to put that out there because, and I'm hopeful, I want staff to make sure that the control board is a part of this conversation because I want to make certain we're clear on, is this irresponsible? I believe it is, but I want to get their input on that because I just couldn't believe that something like this was submitted during this time when we are facing fiscal peril and we don't know what tomorrow holds, but we're saying we're going to go boldly into that dark night. I think it's unacceptable. Thank you.
And it will be in committee. Anyone else? All right, next item.
Item 20, Buffalo Fire Department Interior Improvements at Various Locations.
Motion to approve items 20 through 37.
Noting that item 26 is with conditions.
Item 26 is with conditions?
Yep. Those were the conditions that we talked about, that they, I believe that the, that this contract couldn't be executed unless the contractor is meeting the requirements.
That's correct.
All right. Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item 38, food store license, 62 East Amherst, aka 72 East Amherst.
Motion to send to legislation.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item 39, food store license, 1 Marion Drive.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item 40, food store license, 442 William.
Motion to send to legislation.
Second by Councilmember Galunde.
Item 41, mobile food truck, 7 Yum 6.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item 42, sidewalk cafe, 523 Main Street.
Motion to deny.
So the motion is to deny, and for the record, it's because the applicant has withdrawn the application. Second by Councilmember Galunde.
Item 43, tire handler license, 1019 Clinton.
Motion to approve items 43 and 44.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item 45, used car dealer, 2687 Bailey.
Motion to approve with conditions.
Second by Councilmember Farrah, Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to ask Corporation Council, I know that there was conditions on this one, and they should have been sent to you as well as the city clerk. Yes, it should have been sent to you. But I just want to just go over a couple of them if I could, Mr. President. You know, this was a challenging situation because we had a business open, doing business without the appropriate license. And that somehow, we need to put some legislation in place that there's a huge fine for that. This business has been operating for about a year, and when I approached the individual who, well, his partner, I got a bunch of lies. There should be some type of penalty. There should be some, some type of fine, and I'm not talking about a $20 fine, a $30, a $100. It should be a significant fine because this individual is operating without a license. Then when I go to talk to him, first of all, no, he's disrespectful to the community. My block club leader went to him to talk to him about what's going on. He basically told her to get lost. And so I want to make it clear to anybody that wants to do business in the university district, you disrespect my residents, you will not be in business because that's the first principle. Number two, have your paperwork in order. And this has been a problem in my district for a while, this corner, these used car dealerships. We got to get a handle on them. Thank you, Vince Veraccio, for being a sounding board and being very clear and letting this businessman know what we're expecting as a city and as a council. Because this guy just thought he could just give us all these lies about, I got a business here and I got a business there. Don't know that we can figure out all that. So again, the conditions for this particular license is, number one, you're going to respect my community. Any business or any individual that comes and asks questions respectfully, you should be willing to respond to them. Number two, there cannot be any cars in the city right away because we've had this constant problem where they put these cars on the sidewalk thinking that that's part of their business. Your business is behind your fence. Keep your cars behind you. Number two, there will be no work before 8:00 a.m., and there should be no work after 8:00 p.m. because people should not have to deal with the noise and the traffic. And I got some information from the police department that there are some used car dealerships that using their business as a front to do other things. Well, if I can condense the time that they're operating, and it's reasonable, then hopefully we can condense that. But I hope that this applicant will be responsible. We had a face-to-face conversation. He seemed to be amenable to what I was requesting because I don't think it's unreasonable that if the community comes and asks a question about your business, that you answer them. They didn't say, shut it down at 10 o'clock or something that's outside the bounds. They asked for something reasonable. So those are a couple of the things that I wanted to make sure that is clear, but if anybody wants to do business in the university district, they better know very clearly, if you don't respect the community, you will not have a business. Thank you.
Yeah, the used car lots, and I know, we've had problems, Lovejoy's had problems, and some of that, I think, and I think you should look into legislation. That's, that's what we do. That, that would, would in some way, I don't know if there's already anything on the book. If, if it is, it probably isn't being enforced, and so you might want to look at that and even move up that the cost of the enforcement because it can really affect a community so negatively. So, good. And this business could have been denied.
Yeah.
And you did. So, good. All right, that was seconded by Joe Farrah Leto.
Item 46, used car dealer license, 1019 Clinton.
Motion, motion to approve with conditions.
All right, what number are we on? I'm sorry. 46?
46.
All right. Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item 47, used car dealers, 668 William.
Motion to approve with conditions.
Motion to approve with conditions that will be submitted by the district council member. Councilmember Noakowski is the second.
Item 48, used car dealer, 1261 Hurdle.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Farrah Leto. It must be used car dealer season. Is everybody waiting? There's a lot of used cars out there. Next item.
Item 49, 2020 to 2021 BRIF sub recipient agreements.
Motion to send to finance.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item 50, Buffalo firefighter retirement incentive program.
Motion to approve items 50 through 54.
Second by President Protem Scanlon.
Item 55, Commission on Citizens Rights and Community Relations.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by Councilmember Galunde.
Item 56, approval of issuance and sale of BMHA's Capital Fund Housing Revenue Bonds.
Motion to send to finance.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item 57, liquor license notices.
Motion, receive and file, items 57 through 59.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item 60, appoint legislative assistant.
Motion to adopt items 60 through 63.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item 64, duty to intervene memo.
Motion to send to legislation.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item 65, monthly city hall incident report.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Farrah Leto.
Item 66, seeker negative declaration.
Motion to send to legislation.
Second by Councilmember Farrah Leto.
Item 67, new playground in Old First Ward Community.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by Councilmember Scan.
Item 68, police reform recommendations.
Motion to send police oversight.
Second by Councilmember Galunde.
Item 69, regarding district academies for withdrawn students.
Motion to send to education.
Second by Councilmember Farrah Leto.
Item 70, incident with BPD and Erie County DA.
Motion to send police oversight.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item 71, violations of the city's apprenticeship law.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item 72, perk for New York's richest areas.
This item's open. Councilmember Wyatt.
Okay. Can we send this to education?
Motion to send to education.
Thank you.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item 73, special instrument, 1221 Lovejoy.
Motion to send to legislation, City Planning Board, items 73 through 90.
Second by President Protem Scanlon.
Civil Service, item number one, appoint laborer one.
Oh, civil service?
Civil Service. Motion is to approve items one, two, and three.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Legislation, letter regarding state legislation for Buffalo Police Department residency.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item five, Buffalo Academy of Science charter school renewal denial.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item 91, naming Nikola Tesla Park.
Motion to adopt the resolved remainder to CD.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item 92, appoint Jalona Hill to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board.
Motion to adopt.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item 93, audit of and moratorium on 485A approvals.
Motion to adopt the resolved remainder to legislation, items 93 and 94.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski, who has the floor. Did you want the floor? Councilmember Galunde, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. In regards to item number 94, the draft of duty to intervene law, I just want to clarify a couple of things. Do we have a law in front of us as of right now to vote on?
No, we do not.
Okay. And the reason I asked that, and I knew the answer to that was no, on the, well, there's been a group of people that have been going around and quite frankly, lying publicly and stating people's positions that are completely disingenuous. If you listen to the July 28th Legislation Committee meeting, at about the 49-minute mark, I believe my exact quote was, "I support or I agree with the concept of this law." There was no law in front of us. So, you know, my position was, was that until the law is in front of us, I can't give the final definition, but I support and agree with the decision and with this council and with you, Mr. President, to have a duty to intervene law in front of the city of Buffalo. You know, unfortunately, people put misinformation out there, and I ended up spending last night a couple, several hours with friends that called me and said, well, jeez, I thought you supported that law. And I said, I did. And, you know, I ended up sending them, I said, you know, take a look at item or at the 49-minute mark of legislation and so on and so forth. But I think, if I'm not mistaken, that you had, I think, unanimous support, once again, for the concept of the law when we discussed it. And so, you know, when people put things up on social media, Facebook, et cetera, and they lie, you know, it's, it's unfortunate. It's, it's just, it's very unfortunate that somebody would put something up there because people don't look into the actual truth of the matter. I wonder how many people looked at that legislation meeting at minute 49 to find out what Galunde's position really is, or do they trust somebody that, you know, throws something up there and accuses people of having positions that they don't have? And I'll state publicly right now, you know, my position for the duty to intervene law has not changed since we last spoke about this at the end of July. I support the concept. I support the duty of an officer to intervene. I think that that's part of his or her job, you know, in to support the law of the United States, of the city of Buffalo. And that means that if there is something that's happening that's illegal and it's a police officer that is doing the illegal act, the other police officer has a duty to intervene, and I support clarifying that and codifying that into law. I just want to make that public and, and share that so that, you know, I doubt that there will be an apology from social media that somebody lied quite honestly, but I want people to know where I stand and what my position is. Thank you.
Well, I do remember the discussion, and I think I even said, because every council member during that discussion said that they agreed with basically the concept, there was no law in front of us, there is no law in front of us, and what we just did, and even a media outlet was confused that I talked to today because there was this thought that there was a law in front of us. So I want to clarify what was in front of us. We had constituents send a draft law, but that, and submit it to the council. That's not what we, the process. We accepted it so that we can look at what the constituents suggested. The process for the law is it must be drawn up by the council, basically through our Corporation Council. Actually, a council member could draw up the law, but only lawyer is Joe, so, and I don't think he practices government law. So if you're not injured, Joe couldn't draw up the law. Councilmember Farrah Leto could. So it usually goes through our Corporation Council, which we, I just voted on now, to have our corporate, our lawyer write up a law, draft a law. It then will come back. We're asking for this to, to be rather rapid. There's a date in the resolution, comes back to the council. It then must, not by our choice, we can't go against the process, it then must age if the council votes for it to go to committee. It ages for two weeks, it goes to committee, the public can be heard on it, and then it comes back for a vote. Did I say that all the way correct? All right, our attorney has said it. So, so the public, and I could see where some people may have gotten confused when we had that draft law in front of us, thinking that we, we were voting on the draft law that didn't come from City Hall. So I think it's important to clarify it. But what I heard was a unanimous from all councilmembers, and I even announced that. Anyone else? Thank you for that. Did you, Councilmember Scanlon?
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to address item number 93.
Say it again.
I wanted to address item 93.
Oh, absolutely.
Motion to revisit item 93.
I'd like to be recorded in the negative on this item, but I want to be very clear, it is not because of the intent behind it, more so, more or less a, from the legal side and a bit of the legal argument behind it. I spoke with the sponsor of the legislation, and I applaud Councilmember Noakowski and his effort to ensure that real estate developers are not skirting the initial intent of the 485A tax program. We've seen it in the past where they take a small portion of a project and because they've done X, Y, and Z to it, they now qualify for the program. And again, I believe they are skirting the intent of that legislation. But I, you reading this resolution and you start talking about a moratorium on a state program, I'm not sure if we can do that legally, and so for that reason, I just want to be recorded in the negative. But again, and I told Councilmember Noakowski, this is while moving forward, I'm 100% on board in supporting him and making sure that we have a tax incentive program that is actually doing what it was originally intended to do.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Noakowski?
I would like to piggyback off that, you know, I really appreciate having a, a good conversation with Councilmember Scanlon because he does raise a good point. And I think in order to make sure that this is robust- And I think in order to make sure that this is robust and completely, um, done to the fullest extent it should be done, is, you know, I would like to send the remainders, adopt today, and send the remainders to ledge, and also read a resolved, um, I would like to add a resolve to the resolution to require corporation council to consider in an amendment to all, uh, city of Buffalo local laws in reference to four eighty-five A. So if we have to circle back to make this, uh, you know, full in effect by amending a local law, we should do so, because this is, you know, really trying to stop the issuance of a tax breaks that's been known to, subject to abuse. And New York State has, um, you know, recognized that and changed its current form, um, for, to be effective January first. And if they, you know, agree that it's not appropriate, um, and it's subject to abuse, the city of Buffalo should also agree as well, because this is tax money that's in the city of Buffalo. And although we might not necessarily generate tax revenue right now, we know that we're going to be in turbulent times and turbulent budgets for future years. And right now, the way that this is issued is a hundred percent tax break for eight years. Hundred percent. That's a lot of money. And that's a, you know, my, my residents in the Fillmore District, they don't get a tax break for, for investing in their properties. And that really takes the, the tax burden and shoulders it to everyday residents that are paying our tax levy, and while we're giving away tax breaks to developers, and it's not right. And I would like to, uh, you know, just make sure that this is, you know, fully bulletproof and follow up with an, uh, an ordinance amendment, um, in the common council. So thank you.
Absolutely. Councilmember Fearletto?
Thank you. Um, I just want to say, I'm happy that this is being brought up now, because for the past several years, we've heard from state, some state legislators and other groups blame the city and criticize this body for state legislation that the state legislature passed, and the state legislature had the authority to change it at any time. Um, so I'm happy that Councilmember Noakowski brought this up. It's nice to see the state do something about it, instead of criticize this body or other departments, um, in this building. And it's important to look at everything, and I think once, I think we should have another conversation about this in the future, when it's in committee, to take a look at, see what the state actually did, and see if maybe we could send some recommendations or not. I know one item, to participate for this, to, the project had to spend, I forget the minimum amount of money, but it had to be at least a couple, I think it was at least a couple hundred thousand dollars to do it. So a big developer spending half a million or a million dollars would get these incentives, but a small commercial storefront on Hurdle, or Grant, or Fillmore, that may only be spending a hundred thousand dollars, which a hundred thousand is a lot of money to spend, but they wouldn't be able to get this tax break. So I hope the state legislature addressed that, um, but maybe we can get a copy of the bill when it is in committee. And if we have other suggestions that are common sense, we could possibly vote on resolutions to help the everyday person in the everyday people that are helping our communities and our vibrant streets, and send a message to the state legislature that they should not be forgotten. Thank you.
You, you put it very well. Councilmember Wyatt?
Can I be added to this one?
Pardon me?
I'd like to be added to this.
Add Councilmember Wyatt to the resolution.
I'd like to be added as well.
Add Councilmember Veer to the resolution. Add Councilmember Bowman to the resolution. Add Councilmember Priggin to the resolution. Add Councilmember Gollumbeck to the resolution. Um, I, I, I may have to be careful in my comments, because I think there is some litigation that I've, i- is there still litigation about forty-five A concerning a project in Eloquent? Okay, so let me, I can comment. The reason I'm supporting this, and, and Councilman Fearletto said it, and you said it, there have been projects, for instance, in Eloquent that I did not feel qualified, should have qualified for forty, for this. But because of the way the legislation was written, I had no choice, because it was explained to me, this is what it says, and here's the letter of the law, and this council did pass. I believe that it did go to court, and some things happened. I never wanted it to come back up in court. I felt like whatever the judge said, let it be done. Um, and so I am glad that this is, that we're having this discussion, whether we can or not, as Councilmember Scanlon said, and that's going to be important. But we'll let the public know. If we can't, then, then we do have to lean more heavily on our state people, our state representatives, because I just think that the way this is written now, it ties this council's hands, and then it looks like we're being friendly to developers. And if we don't, then, if we don't follow the law, they just go to court, and the judge overturns it, and we're, we're, we, we have broken the law. So I think this is very important, and I, I commend you in, in following that. Councilmember Fearletto, then Councilmember Veer.
And I just wanted to add to what you were, what you were saying. When projects that apply for four eighty-five A exemptions go to the city, they go to the city assessment office and apply. It's not, the, the council has zero discretion on it. The council never votes on any project if they should get this exemption or not get this exemption. So I just think that's very
Yes.
clear to point out, because we, there's never a determination by this body if a project should receive it or not. It's dictated by the state law that the assessment office either gives it to them or doesn't, based on following the state law, and we don't have any say in it.
Very good point. Councilmember Veer?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. I have met with our state representative regarding, uh, this, and they asked the city of Buffalo, um, to change it, or to opt out. It's state law. It's up to them to change it, amend it. And I'm glad to see come January first, it's going to be amended. However, we have four months in between that this resolution, um, has an impact on. And there is another solution to this for these four months. If we can't do this, is the city should just opt out for four months. It's the administration and the city of Buffalo, not the common council, that opts in or opts out. So if, if, if you want for four months, we're going to opt out of this, because we're going to have new legislation, and we're, there are too many loopholes in this law right now, that developers are going to try to run in the next four months to take care of. If they know there's four months before the new law comes into effect, we better get in there. So the city can say, "Hey, for these four months, we're going to opt out." And so that's another solution to this problem, is just opt out of it until the new law takes effect.
The, if the city, and I know I'm putting you on the spot, but you don't have to answer it today if you don't, because it's going to committee, but we are, we are approving this. If the city opted out, who would make the decision to opt out? Are you aware of that? That answer? Okay. So I think if we had that for the committee meeting, and then to know, and then if this body, uh, has that option, I mean, to, to do that, and this body chooses to do so, I think that, that that is, uh, that's an option. Good. Anybody else? Did I miss anybody? All right. Thank you, sir. Next item.
Item ninety-five, incident on Hurdle Ave with peaceful protesters.
Motion to adopt the resolves remainder to CD for both items ninety-five and ninety-six.
All right. Anybody? All right. Next item. And by the way, on this ninety-five, I want to be clear that this is not an accusation against police. Public has seen some picture, seen a picture with a man with a knife, and the public is asking, did an officer see it? But I do want to, and I think, uh, uh, Councilmember Fearletto and I talked earlier, the protesters, who were very peaceful, and who really, I think, handled themselves well, the district council member who has publicly spoken about it, um, and thank you for that, uh, uh, standing up with those protesters, uh, Councilmember Fearletto, and saying, "You handled yourself well." They didn't pull out knives, they didn't do the same thing. So, you know, the peaceful protests, they go a long way, especially in the city of Buffalo. But the two people who are accused are not from the city of Buffalo, they are not from North Buffalo. So I think it's important that the right information be out there. Next item?
Item ninety-seven, ordinance amendment, chapter one seventy-five, please.
Motion to approve items ninety-seven and ninety-eight.
Second by President Pro temp Scanlon.
Item ninety-nine, commissioner of deeds.
Motion to adopt.
Second by, uh, Councilmember Wingo.
Item one hundred, the city's COVID nineteen-related spending.
This is a late file, refer to university district council member, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Chair. Um, I would like this to be adopted and sent to the rest, to finance. Um, depending on what may happen over the next couple of months, um, we may come into some dollars to assist us, or we may not. But in the meantime, we should at least know what those costs are. We, we should have those details. So if something does happen, we know how to allocate the dollars. Um, I don't think that we should be going blindly, once we get this money, as if, um, uh, if we get this money, um, as if it became Christmas and we forget about everything else. Um, we wanted to, uh, 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 assign those dollars appropriately, um, as they relate to those areas in which we were, um, charged an expense that we didn't expect. Um, we should put those dollars back in, as well as there's other things that we should be doing, um, that relate to that. And, and, and also making sure that we are putting ourselves in a better, um, better footing going forward, because we've been, um, not really very focused on making sure that we present and we, we put some reserves already away, um, because this COVID, this pandemic is not going to be over anytime soon. So we have to be prudent with every single dollar we get. Um, it's unfortunate right now that I have some major questions, um, regarding the information we're getting. Um, as a former banker and an auditor, you know, when you saw one thing that was not correct, you started questioning everything else. And so I do have questions, and I'm very, very, very concerned about the information we're getting. So I want to get things in writing, so that it's not any speculation, it's not anything that you told me. I want to be able to compare that information with a general ledger or something that says, that states that this is exactly what it is, because too many times, in these chambers, we get misinformation. We're told something, then we find out it's not totally true. So at this point in time, I think that is appropriate for us to know where we are as far as COVID-related spends, expenses. So there is no question to where our financial failures have been, and where we've been impacted by COVID. It's not a speculation, it's matter of fact, because numbers don't lie. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Gollumbeck?
Thank you. Um, I can't access my computer, so I haven't been able to see the late file. Could somebody read the resolves for me, so that I know what I'm voting on?
Let's read the resolves and to the records. Somebody here from the clerk's office? Who's here from the? Is anybody here from the clerk's office? I mean, not clerk's office, council staff? You have them? All right.
You can read it? Okay. Resolve that the city of Buffalo common council requests admin, finance, submit all data year-to-date to the common council regarding the city COVID nineteen-related spending, and directs the city clerk to forward copies of this resolution to administration, finance, audit, and control.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Those are the two. And what's the motion? I'm sorry.
So the motion was
Adopt the resolves, the remainder to finance?
Okay.
You okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
All righty. And, uh, again, several of our council members, we don't have computers, so they're not, they haven't updated, and so, we got it. We'll read whatever we have to. Next item?
Item one oh one, home reel message.
Motion to adopt.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Mr. Chairman, can we revisit item number twelve?
Yes, we may. Motion is to revisit item number twelve, second by Councilmember Gollumbeck. This item is before.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir?
Um, I would like to rescind the motion to send this to legislation.
All right. Motion is rescinded or moved
Motion to rescind the previous motion, to send to legislation.
Second by Councilmember Wingo?
Motion is to approve. Motion is not to approve?
Second by Councilmember Wingo. So that was six oh four North. All right. Announcements? Announcements?
Announcement of committee meetings. The following meetings are scheduled to be streamed live on www.facebook.com/bflocc. Committee on Civil Service, Tuesday, September eighth, twenty twenty, at nine forty-five AM. Committee on Finance, following Civil Service. Committee on Legislation, Tuesday, September eighth, twenty twenty, at one o'clock PM. Committee on Community Development, Tuesday, September eighth, twenty twenty, at two o'clock PM.
All right. Councilmembers, any announcements for your district? Councilmember Wingo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I would like to announce that the Maston District, um, we are much past stakeholder meeting number fifty. I know we're almost at stakeholder meeting number sixty. But we are literally trying our very best to ensure that the residents of Maston District and the city of Buffalo know that we have these stakeholders' meetings to disseminate relevant, pertinent information regarding the district. We don't just hum and eat and have breakfast and have a great time fellowshipping with each other. We do. But that's not all that we do. We share information, we get updates on developments, and we also give out our newsletter that has pertinent information regarding some of the initiatives that are coming from the administration, that are coming from the comptroller's office, and some of the legislation and resolutions that we are working on right here in council chambers. I make these announcements every other week, so that if anyone should just happen to come to the council's webpage, or they just happen to look at public access, they do know that Maston is making an effort to get the information out there. It is impractical and unrealistic for any council member to knock on every door in their district and give them, the individual, a flyer. That, that, I don't think is humanly possible, and it would cost too much money. We cannot afford that. So what we do is we make information available as frequently as possible for the most people to join in. We use Facebook, we use Zoom, we use a newsletter, we use public access, we use the city's website, and you can always call the office. And that goes for all of the council members. We all have these platforms for people to use, to get information from us, so that they can be informed. With that being said, with COVID nineteen, um, being, uh, you know, keeping us home, essentially, uh, we, we've been using social media to get information out. And we've also, in Maston District, instead of meeting together just to stay in, uh, compliance with the New York State regulations as far as the guidelines are concerned for social distancing, we've come up with an innovative idea to have a drive-through stakeholders' meeting. So, all that being said, you can still come to the Delavan Rider Center between the hours of eight thirty AM and eleven thirty AM, and still get a nice breakfast, you can still get our newsletter, still get flyers from various things, still get announcements from various developments from our staff. The next meeting will be September twelfth, that Saturday, at eight thirty AM. Come by, drive, get coffee and donuts, get a bag of fruit and, and good food, and get information. We also have bread from, I forgot where the bread comes from, but we have some good bread, too. So just come through and just drive, you don't have to stop long, just come through, get your bag, and keep it go, and keep it moving. But the information is there for anybody who wants the information. Anybody who accuses the Maston District particularly of not trying to get information out, hasn't tried to get the information, because the information is there if you want the information. Just like an individual call and complaint about something that they are against, the information is there before and after their complaint. So I want everyone to know, we're doing our very best considering what we're dealing with in these times. So kudos to all of the council members who've been working throughout. We've all been working throughout. We just haven't been here in council chambers. We've all been working throughout. I mean, we understand that there are some folks who are essential workers, who have to be at their job. It just so happened that we could do our job from home. Now we're here. So, the, I, so it is what it is. At the end of the day, we've been doing our job, and we're going to continue to do our job. Please call my office if you have any questions, comments, concerns, or suggestions. We are here for you. And thank you for the opportunity to, to make this long, drawn-out announcement, but I think some of those things just needed to be said, so that folks do understand that we are making every effort to disseminate good information, good information, good information to the public. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I do. Any other announcements? Councilmember Bowman?
Thank you, Council President. Gerard Place, uh, twenty-five fifteen Bailey is teaming up with Feed More. They're hosting their mobile food pantry this Thursday, September third, at one PM. Uh, for further details, you could call Gerard Place, eight nine seven nine nine four eight. And then we also partnered at the Hennepin Community Center in Lovejoy. Uh, we have the UB dental van parked outside for, uh, Monday through Friday for the rest of the month, up until October second. And, uh, there'll be more details on my Facebook page. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Wyatt, and then Councilmember Noakowski.
Um, just want to invite the residents who are watching this, um, to our virtual community meeting, which is going to take place Wednesday, um, September ninth, at six PM. You can access it on Facebook, um, on our university district page, or on my personal page. So I just want to make sure that people know that we continue to try to get information out. This will be our second, or third, virtual meeting. Um, we will have Chief Carmen Minza on, as well as Rashid McDuffie, um, to our corporation council, to talk about some of the legislation as it speaks to evictions. Um, so it's a great meeting. Um, it's a time for us to really, again, as Councilmember Wingo mentioned, about getting good information. councilmember Wingo mentioned, about getting good information out so that people are made aware of things that may impact them. I know we've been getting a lot of phone calls regarding speeding, ATVs, and things. Here's your opportunity to hear from the chief to see how they're dealing with it. It's not an easy issue to address. I know councilmember Bowman is talking about some legislation regarding the ATVs because it's been a big, big problem. So, we continue to work even through this COVID. That's our job. That's what leaders do. And I give a lot of credit and respect to my colleagues as we've all had to deal with this pandemic in different ways, but we've dealt with it as leaders. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Noakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to announce that on this Thursday, September 3rd, starting at 1 o'clock, at the Centennial AME Zion Church located at 127 Dode Street, we will be having a community day. We will be helping pass out food, voter registrations, connecting with health services and the census. This will be partnered with Erie County legislator Howard Johnson of the First District and Pastor Bufford. And if you don't know Pastor Bufford, she's a bright light and Genesee Moselle, and come out, we'll be there.
Well, I grew up AME Zion, so I want to thank you for saying it correctly, because some people call it Aim Zion or say something different. So, obviously, you have done your homework, sir. True Bethel continues to feed. You can call the church at 895-8222. The pantry is open two days a week. We're feeding about 3,000 people, families, a month right now, or 3,000 meals a month. But that is open to City of Buffalo residents, 895-8222. Any other announcements? All right. Again, to the public, our situation is fluid as far as our meetings. We will depend, and we will watch the science and what is going on. But for, for at least the month of September, if the science allows, the council will have its council meeting with the council members here. Everything will remain virtual so the public is able to see it, and the committee meetings will be totally virtual as we deal and do our best to keep people safe. Majority, councilmember Wyatt?
Mr. President, if I can just make one last announcement, there's still rapid testing taking place, and I want to leave this 1-800 number so that people can call this number. It's sponsored by New York State. I actually have to get a test today. It's 1-833-697-8764. That's 833-697-8764. This is testing that's been taking place for the last couple of weeks, as far as I know.
No, just since, for the last couple of days.
Last couple of days, okay. So, if someone is interested in getting that test, they get their results within 15 minutes or 30 minutes. So, I encourage people to get that test because I believe, as of today, that your healthcare provider, from what I've been told, will not be paying for those tests. I'm not totally certain, but I know that the media outlets have said, September 1st, it would no longer be covered. So, I know New York State is doing this right now with, thanks to our governor and his leadership. But this is an opportunity for people to get rapidly tested within a short period of time. And I don't know how much longer it's going, but if they can call today, they can get scheduled within their community. Thank you.
Tomorrow is the last day.
So, Wednesday is the last day, because we have a test inside at the church. All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by councilmember Gollumbeck.